I think that yours.
We should start it?
I think if you, if you, if you read your script, I think that will be fine. So you guys open up yours first, do what you usually do, and then we'll open up ours.
Okay.
All right.
And we got a tummy clock, clock over there, it's gonna be ten for the rest of the evening.
Six oh four.
So I can't tell, six oh four, thank you. All right, so it is six oh four.
Six oh six.
Six oh six.
And Nathan is calling in with the two oh seven number?
Oh. I'll, thank you.
Okay, so, six oh five, six oh six-ish, good evening, everybody. Pretty much.
Hey guys. Hey.
Oh, this is the same.
Yeah.
All right, so now it might be six oh seven, but it's, this open meeting of the planning board of Acton is being conducted in person and remotely consistent with the legislative acts of two thousand twenty-two, chapter twenty, section twenty, an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the meeting agenda. Please see that agenda on the town website for details on how to participate remotely. And tonight's meeting will feature public comment. And it may be recorded and may be published or even rebroadcast. All participation within this meeting will be visible to others. And finally, tonight, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. So.
Do you want to end?
Yep. So, are we, are we gonna still do our, have Sam do the rule, right? Okay. Sam, if you don't mind, please.
Four, meeting of September nineteen, twenty twenty-three. John?
I am here.
Michelle?
Here.
Here.
You sign, present.
Is Nathan?
And?
Nate.
Is Nate on or?
On.
There he is, Nathan Cookson.
Oh, good, hi Nate. Okay, thank you, Sam. So, it's been, at least, if I remember, a year or so since last time we did a Zoom with Maynard, good to see you guys. Via the group. And, they have a presentation, but I, I can be quiet and just.
I think we can let Maynard do their role call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to open up, guys, I need to open up the meeting for Maynard.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. The date today is September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is six oh eight PM. As noted earlier, this meeting is a virtual meeting, as noted on the agenda. And this meeting is being recorded, I will take roll call of the Maynard Planning Board members. If the Maynard Planning Board members could please, let me know that you can also participate fully in this meeting, virtually. Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie, are you here?
I am.
Thank you. Annette, are you here? Bill is, I saw Annette on earlier, is she not here anymore?
She is, I, I.
She is, let me just promote her, I apologize, I think she hopped off.
Okay. Okay, I can participate virtually myself, and I do not see Jim Coleman, correct?
I don't see Jim, I don't see, I don't see Jeff, yeah.
Jeff needs to just, Jeff Black needs to get promoted.
Okay, Annette's here, hi Annette.
Hi, how are you?
Are you able to?
Is here.
Annette, are you able? Annette, are you able to participate remotely?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Uh, here's Jeff Black.
And then. Um.
Hi Jeff.
Did Jim call in, or?
No, I, I just spoke to him.
One more person with their hand raised.
I am promoting him, I don't, their name is Magic, which is bizarre. Makes me think of, M A P C.
Give Jim.
Well, he's, and I just resented him the link, so he'll be popping in, I'm sure.
Okay, why don't you, um, kick that person out for now, until we can figure this out?
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, from Maynard's point of view, this meeting is open and can proceed.
Okay.
Uh, so tonight we have Sarah Scott from M A P C. She's been working with us on the Connect Powder Mill Corridor project, which we've been working on with Maynard for the past two years, maybe longer since prior to me being here. We've gotten to a really good spot with some proposed zoning, and tonight we will be showing both planning boards the proposed zoning and hoping to get your feedback on it. Sarah, please feel free to take it away.
Great, thank you, and I will note that I am in the office with the office cleaners, so if you hear the vacuums going behind me, that's what that is. Can everyone hear me okay? Yeah, okay, great. So as Kayla said, my name is Sarah Scott, I am a regional land use planner with M A P C, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which, as most of you probably know, is the regional planning agency for greater Boston. So that includes Maynard, Acton, and ninety-nine other cities and towns in the region. And M A P C has been working with the two towns for a number of years now, first with phase one of this Acton-Maynard corridor project, and now with phase two, which seeks to implement the recommendations from phase one. So I believe that you last heard from us about this project almost exactly a year ago, when we were kicking off the scope. And so we wanted to come back and give you an update about the work that's been done over the past year, and how we're looking to wrap up the project in the upcoming months. So I'm gonna attempt to share my screen, and we'll see how this goes. All right, so does that show up as full screen for you?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, so. As I mentioned, we're gonna start with a project recap. Then we're gonna share the community engagement findings from the work that we've been doing this past year. Go into the zoning framework that we're basing the standards off of, and then dive a little bit into the specific standards that have been developed with the two towns. And then I wanted to save some room for discussion, which is why I asked Kayla for a little bit extra time, because really the goal of this conversation is to get feedback from all of you, since you know your towns well, you know development patterns, you know the zoning bylaw. And we really wanna make sure that this is an overlay district that is meeting the needs of the towns. So I'm not gonna spend too much time doing a project recap, since like I said, I imagine a lot of you have already heard this before, but since it has been a year. Phase one was a redevelopment strategy that M A P C worked on with Acton and Maynard, that was finalized in the spring of two thousand twenty-two. And it was studying was essentially a mile and a half long corridor of Powder Mill Road that connects these two towns. And the towns came to M A P C because they had been seeing an interest in new development along the corridor, and found that the existing zoning, which is mostly base zoning, really was not shaping development in the way that met the needs of the community. So M A P C worked on this plan, which had a number of different components. It involved a market analysis, looking at some of the existing commercial in the area. It did a zoning analysis, understanding what some of the existing land use policies were in town, how that was being expressed through zoning bylaws. And then it did a lot of community engagement to really try to understand what residents, businesses, and other stakeholders are looking for in these two parts of town. And you can access that full plan and all the materials from it on the project webpage, which is listed here on the slide. And I'll be sending all these slides out afterwards as well, so you'll have access to the links and whatnot. The redevelopment strategy had a few key recommendations. The first one, which is really the most overarching strategy, is to create an overlay zoning district that would shape future development along the corridor. And that would be an overlay zoning district in Acton, and then a similar one in Maynard, where they would have compatible standards. The redevelopment strategy also had recommendations around improving access to and environmental quality of the Assabette River. A lot of folks identified the river as an undervalued asset that could really help make the Powder Mill Corridor more of a destination and more of a vibrant place. In parallel with that were recommendations around complete streets and transportation projects. Complete streets being this idea that all streets are safe and accessible to a variety of modes, predominantly pedestrians and bicyclists, in addition to single occupancy vehicles, public transit, other types of vehicles that use the roadways. And this was really, again, around this idea of trying to make Powder Mill Corridor a safe destination, where folks felt comfortable not only going to the area, but also moving through the area. And really, those transportation projects are meant to work hand in hand with those environmental goals. So, the idea with phase two of this project is really to implement those recommendations through the creation of a zoning overlay district. And what we're trying to do is within this overlay district, implement those streetscape design guidelines and those river access design guidelines that came from the earlier phase of work around transportation and environmental quality. And the goal, hopefully, what we're doing here is creating a more walkable and safe Powder Mill Road neighborhood where people want to live, work, spend time, and even visit. So keep that in mind as we go through this presentation, because one of the questions that I have for you is, do you think that this zoning meets this goal? All right, so moving into community engagement findings, we did a lot of community engagement in the past year, and I wanted to share a little bit about the different ways that we reached out to folks, as well as what we heard from them. So pretty soon after we met with you last fall, we held a public forum that was open to anyone who wanted to come. We had about fifty-six people who attended, and then additional folks who became part of the project mailing list, and then started engaging the project in other ways. We polled folks on a number of questions, first asking them what kinds of uses they wanted to see along Powder Mill Road, as many of you know, uses are one of the key things that are regulated by the zoning bylaw. And so we wanted to make sure that we were really focusing on the uses that folks were looking for. There was a majority of support for a lot of the uses, as you can see here in the diagram, but the prominent ones were restaurants, retail, and housing. So you can already start to see some of the themes that were playing out in terms of folks wanting a neighborhood that was vibrant, and a neighborhood where they could, for example, live there, and also go to a restaurant for dinner, and also go and do the shopping that they needed to do, or run errands, or things like that. Folks also identified arts and culture uses, having mixed uses, and various types of neighborhood and personal services as things that they were interested in. A little bit less interest in entertainment and officer medical uses. We then took uses and added to that building form and development patterns, and asked folks what they thought about existing development patterns along Powder Mill Road. I would say, somewhat surprisingly to me, overwhelmingly, the response that we got back was that people wanted more businesses, they wanted more people, they wanted more development. There was a small slice of folks who said that the area was too dense, that was only three percent. And another kind of slightly larger, but still small slice of folks who said that the current density was about right. And then, again, so folks who weren't really sure. But what, the sense that we got from, from the response here was that there was support for encouraging more robust development along Powder Mill Road. One of the needs that had been identified was housing. And so we asked what types of housing was needed, both in terms of who would be living there, and then also the types of buildings that the housing would be located in. Again, as you can see on the left on this graph here, really strong support for having housing that meets the needs of a variety of residents, whether that's people with lower incomes, families, people with disabilities, younger folks. And then also some broad support for different types of housing beyond the traditional single-family or even two-family housing structure. So folks were interested in having townhouses, multifamily buildings. There was also interest in mixed use, where there would be commercial uses on the ground story with housing above, as well as adaptive reuse of existing structures. We did a little visual preference exercise as part of this community forum, showing folks examples of existing buildings to ask, what do you like, what do you not like as much, so we could start to hone in on some of the design guidelines that would be baked into the zoning. These photos show examples of development that people liked or loved. And in contrast, these photos show some examples of development that people didn't like as much. So you can see with the, the first examples here, that there is a really strong preference for what I would call more of a vernacular, traditional, new village style architecture. After the fall forum that we had, we then engaged in three separate focus groups. And the goal with the focus groups was to have smaller group discussion, where we were able to specifically identify participants based on an interest or an identity that they had in common, and engage them in a general discussion about challenges and opportunities that they experienced, that may have been unique to their perspective. So to do that, we met with some business owners along the corridor, we met with residents. And then we also had a focus group that was open to all sorts of folks, but that focused on these topics of complete streets and river access, so this transportation and environment connection. I'll just report out a little bit on each of these focus groups to give you a sense of what we heard. And again, I'll share these slides, so you can look at everything a little bit more in depth. But what we heard from businesses primarily is that they do consider Powder Mill to be a destination, but that there's an opportunity to enhance that. And part of the way to enhance that is with certain uses. For example, they were talking about how it would be great to have some sit-down restaurants in the corridor, having some destination detail that really draws people to the area, as well as having more residents and having areas for people to spend time, such as with parks and playgrounds, so they're not just coming, doing their errand and leaving, but there's really an enticement for them to stay. There was also support for establishing a river walk on the south side of the Assabette River, which mostly is kind of the backend of folks' property, as a way to, to really activate the riverfront there, and also again, to encourage folks to come to the area. There was also consensus that businesses needed more resources and support, which to some extent is outside of the scope of this specific project, but one of the ways that we can meet that need is by having vibrant zoning and predictable permitting processes, so that there is a little bit more predictability for businesses that are trying to come in on the corridor. The box on the right, that's highlighted in yellow, identifies some of the themes that came up in the discussion. We just did some simple coding to give you a sense of the themes that were most prominent, and the numbers indicate how often those themes came up in discussions, so. Zoning, as you can imagine, was top of the list, but there were some other topics as well. And one of the participants said, in response to the vision that we were talking about, that it's there, the vision is there, the goal isn't that lofty, this is something that we can accomplish, which I think a lot of folks agreed with. Residents shared some similar feedback, they were also interested in having more destination detail experiential businesses to bring folks to the corridor and to kind of anchor the commercial district there. So folks have mentioned things like climbing gyms or escape rooms, along with having small businesses and parks and playgrounds to create a sense of place and to create a neighborhood feel. Again, there was support for providing access to the river and really turning the river into an asset, as well as prioritizing development on the two ends of the corridor, almost like a gateway to bring people into the area and to say, hey, there's something going on here, you should come check it out. There was also support for incentivizing sustainable development standards in the area, especially because of the proximity to the river, trying to use redevelopment to improve the environmental quality of the river and the watershed generally. And then folks also said that even though they were supportive of new development, they wanted to make sure that this new development was sensitive to the existing land uses and the existing residents who were living there. One person in this focus group said, quote, "The development of the riverfront is an important thing to do." And that's a theme that we heard time and time again. In the complete streets focus group, we found that there was a strong consensus that walking and biking on Powder Mill Road felt incredibly unsafe, and folks wanted to be able to travel in the area, but they didn't feel safe doing so. So there was a lot of support for having a connected sidewalk network that enabled people to travel more freely. And as part of that, trying to reduce the number of curb cuts to, to separate parcels, so that there would be less conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. Folks also mentioned the opportunity to use the complete streets framework for some public realm improvements, whether that included benches or shade trees or street furniture, and really trying to create more of a, a safe corridor for folks to, to pass through. In the river access focus group, again, folks were talking about how the river is an undervalued asset. They want accessing the river to be a priority rather than an afterthought. And they thought that there would be some uses that would be more compatible with the river than some of the uses that are currently there. There were also some specific opportunities for sites that could be redeveloped to enhance river access. The Elks Lodge parking lot in Maynard came up a lot as a place where there could be a park or new launch, something like that. And folks also had some suggestions about improving infrastructure along the corridor. The last bit of community engagement that I wanted to share is actually not something that we did as part of this project, but Acton is doing a parallel project to update their open space and recreation plan, and they shared the survey results with us, because there's a lot of connections, especially with the river access part of the work that we're doing. And some of the key takeaways that we heard here, which again was kind of this townwide survey, was really around improving existing sidewalks, building new trails, making sure that people know where there are opportunities for open space and recreation, and really highlighting the value of water in all different forms. Folks also had some priorities that they had extra support for. That included some boat launches for watercraft, as well as riverside boardwalks, and then viewing opportunities for birds and wildlife. So we wanted to incorporate this into some of the recommendations for Powder Mill, because it speaks to ways that we can enhance the Assabette River experience in my area. We also got some input from high schoolers, which I always appreciate. And they noted the importance of environmentally sustainable design standards, in addition to some of these other points that you've been hearing elsewhere. All right, are there any questions or anything that you want me to just clarify before I move on to the zoning framework? Some two notes in the chat. Okay. All right, I'm gonna keep going then, so in terms of, sorry?
Oh, say thank you.
Okay, sure. Um, okay, so in terms of how we're going about developing the zoning, this is the way that I think about it. So you start with your recommendations, which are a little bit higher level, so that might be, for example, saying, we want to have uses that activate the corridor. And then the next stage is to take that recommendation and turn it into a standard. So you would say the standard is that all buildings that front the Powder Mill Road corridor are going to have active uses on the ground story. And then the next step is you turn that into bylaw language. So you'd say, here's the list of uses, here's exactly where, here's the types of projects that that applies to. So it's a bit of a process of refining from kind of those big lofty visions into the specific language that goes into the zoning bylaw. And part of why I like to lay out this process is because it highlights the ways that we engage the public. So in the recommendations and the standard development phases, we have been doing community engagement. And then with the bylaw language, ultimately, that has to be approved at town meeting, so the public is involved at all phases of this project. So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about recommendations, and then we'll go into standards, which is kind of where we're at today. In terms of recommendations, as I mentioned, the phase one plan had recommended an overlay zoning district. So that's what we're moving forward with, and the idea is that it would be an optional overlay zoning district that property owners can choose to follow. So the base zoning will still be in effect, and a property owner can still develop their property according to the base zoning. But our hope is that the overlay zoning will be enticing enough that that is the route that property owners will want to take to redevelop their properties instead. The standards in the overlay zoning district will integrate form-based code principles to some extent to guide the form enassing of buildings, so we're not strictly talking about use and dimensional standards, but trying to think a little bit more about architectural design and also public realm improvements. And then, I think perhaps most importantly, is that we're coordinating the standards between the two towns to ensure that the development is cohesive along the corridor, and you don't have a variety of different land use types like we do today. So really, the goal with this overlay zoning district is to incentivize development that strengthens the Powder Mill Road corridor as a destination that allows residents and visitors to safely shop and eat locally, and to access the Assabette River. This is a map of the proposed overlay zoning sub-districts. The sub-districts are smaller areas within the overlay district that allow zoning to be tailored to unique neighborhood conditions. As all of you probably know, Powder Mill Corridor is not a monolith, there are very different existing conditions all along the corridor, not just from Maynard to Acton, but even within the towns, and so we wanted to respect that, but also promote redevelopment in the areas where it made sense. So the sub-district approach was our way of trying to find that balance. And the thick black line that you'll see here on the map is the extent of the study area that had been defined in phase one, so we're sticking to that for the most part. I'm just gonna go through the sub-districts a little bit to explain the goals of each of them. In sub-district one, which is what we're calling the Village Center, we are attempting to connect the downtown overlay district in Maynard to the Powder Mill Road corridor. So this district only exists in Maynard, and it really is trying to establish that gateway that folks had talked about in the focus groups. And the way that we're doing that is by promoting compact mixed-use development on small lots, which is what we see today, really just trying to enhance that and make sure that that's allowed in the zoning. We also want to allow compatible commercial uses that encourage foot traffic. So uses that are not necessarily auto-oriented, and uses where folks are probably not spending a lot of time really just encouraging people to come and go, create a sense of activity on the street. Sub-district two, we're calling Neighborhood Residential, this also only exists in Maynard. And the idea is that it would bring a lot of these existing residential properties into conformance with zoning. There are a number of very small parcels in this area that are actually out of conformance with the base zoning, so we thought that if we could, for example, lower the minimum lot size and make these properties conforming, it would give property owners the ability to make small incremental developments to improve their property, like adding an addition or something like that. That really allows them to stay in place and keep that housing affordable. We also wanted to make it possible to redevelop certain sites in keeping with these existing patterns of smaller-scale residential development. And also trying to maintain the residential feel of the neighborhood while allowing for some home occupations, as well as some community amenities. Sub-district three is one of the sub-districts that exists in both Maynard and Acton, and we're calling it the Neighborhood Business District. The goal here is to foster smaller-scale mixed-use development with first-floor commercial that encourages pedestrian activity, and also encourages connections with the river. As you can see, the majority of this area has riverfront access. And so we want to promote commercial uses that are more compatible with the riverfront, and also to incentivize green infrastructure and other types of environmentally sensitive development, so that any new development that happens on these sites improves the existing environmental conditions. Sub-district four is also located in both Maynard and Acton. This is our multifamily housing. This is our multifamily housing sub-district, and the goal here is to create sustainable, environmentally sensitive redevelopment through higher-density residential. And the goal here is to really have housing that engages with the street as well as blends into the surrounding neighborhood and has enough of a density of residential, uh, sorry, has enough of a density of residences to support commercial activity along the corridor. Another key component of the multifamily housing sub-district is that it will ensure compliance with 3A. I'm sure some of you probably have heard a lot about 3A, others maybe not so much. I'm not gonna go into a whole separate 3A presentation, but just to give you some of the highlights. The 3A is kind of the shorthand that we've been using for the NVTA Communities' Multifamily Zoning Requirements, which is a law that was passed recently. But the purpose of encouraging the production of multifamily housing near transit and other smart growth locations to address housing affordability and supply issues. Both Maynard and Acton must comply with the law, but the ways that they're required to comply are a little bit different. So what we're trying to do here is to locate similar compliant zoning districts along Powder Mill Road, again, to make sure that the development in Acton is similar to the development in Maynard, while meeting these minimum requirements of the law, mostly around providing multifamily housing at a at a certain key density. And then lastly, Subdistrict Five, we're calling the Commercial Center, and that would be located in Acton. The idea here is to allow commercial buildings with large footprints that still incorporate pedestrian-friendly design. In this area, there are larger lot sizes that can support these larger footprint buildings that are better suited to commercial or light industrial uses. And those are industries that can provide sustainable kind of career-driven jobs for folks. So we don't want to eliminate those uses along the corridor. But we still want uses that meet the needs of residents and also promote these goals of complete streets and river access. So that's a quick tour through the five sub-districts. And once we get to the end of the presentation, I'm happy to go back through and pull anything up. But I'll take you now into the zoning standards, which expands a little bit on the general recommendations and goals of each sub-district and put some numbers to that. The overlay district has a number of components. I'm gonna focus mostly on use regulations and dimensional standards for each of the sub-districts, but then I'll talk a little bit more generally about housing affordability, design guidelines, parking, and environmental standards. So I made these little fact sheets, as we're calling them, for each of the sub-districts, just to give you a snapshot of what we really mean when we're talking about the goals for each of these sub-districts. This is Subdistrict One, the Village Center in Maynard. This is a photo of the existing downtown in Maynard, just to give you a sense of what we're looking to kind of base this zoning off of. Some of the allowed uses would include two-family and multifamily housing, as well as assorted retail and restaurant and personal services. So those are the types of uses that encourage folks to not only come to an area, but to be able to move around through it. There are some additional uses in all the sub-districts that we think are compatible with the goal of the sub-district, but maybe have slightly more externalities. So those would be allowed by special permit, meaning that there'd be a slightly kind of higher level of review in order for those uses to be. Sorry, does someone have a question? No, okay. In order for those uses to be located along the corridor. The dimensional standards, again, we're kind of still in conversation with the towns about exactly what these numbers would look like, but I wanted to put some numbers out there just again to give you a sense of what these sub-districts are kind of shaping up to be. We, one of the big things that we changed in this area is significantly reducing the minimum lot area. And this number, three thousand nine hundred, while it seems very specific, is actually the kind of the lowest number that that we identified for existing lots in the area. So that's kind of the smallest lot area of existing parcels. And we wanted to make sure that all those parcels now comply with the zoning. In keeping with this kind of Village Center downtown idea, the minimum open space is slightly lower, the maximum height is slightly higher, and there are minimal setbacks to really make it feel like the buildings are engaging with the street. Subdistrict Two is that Neighborhood Residential District in Maynard. And the allowed uses here are are less commercial, more strictly residential, allowing two-family and garden apartments, but not those multifamily uses that you saw in Subdistrict One. In addition to allowing most home occupations and agricultural and recreational uses, which are generally allowed in these towns anyway. In terms of the dimensional standards, again, having a lower minimum lot area, slightly higher open space than the Village Center, slightly lower heights, and slightly larger setbacks, trying to keep in character with these existing development that we largely see in this area. Subdistrict Three is the Neighborhood Business District that's in both Maynard and Acton. Here, we're trying to promote mixed-use housing, where you would have this ground store, ground story commercial, whether it's retail, restaurant, professional services. Or you could have a mixed-use building where those upper levels are offices instead of housing. In terms of the dimensional standards, the lot area is a little bit larger because that's the size of the parcels that we saw in this area. And we are encouraging slightly higher heights than Subdistrict Two, but lower than Subdistrict One. So it'd be around three or three and a half stories. And again, kind of setbacks on the low to low moderate side. You may notice that under side yard setback, we actually wrote zero to ten. And that's because that is a discussion we've been having a lot, and I'd be curious to get your feedback on, which is about if we want to incentivize having buildings be offset on the lot in order to try to encourage views of the river between buildings. So that's kind of one of the ways that we're thinking about doing that. Haven't quite nailed that down yet. Subdistrict Four is this multifamily housing district, and Acton is actually doing a separate planning process, also with my colleagues at MAPC, to to do their 3A compliant housing townwide. And so we've been drawing on the great work that they've been doing there to really identify some of the dimensional standards that are most appropriate to the Powder Mill Corridor. So Subdistrict Four would be predominantly multifamily townhouse development, pretty strictly residential, with the exception of possibly having some child and adult daycare centers. These would be parcels that are much larger than you see elsewhere on the corridor, where there'd be higher open space requirements, higher setbacks, a little bit more of a kind of suburban style of residential development. And then Subdistrict Five is that Commercial Center on the eastern part of the corridor in Acton. And this is where we'd be allowing more of the kind of traditional commercial uses by right, such as office buildings, healthcare facilities, scientific lab uses, as well as some of those more active uses like retail, restaurant, and whatnot. This is also one of the locations where light manufacturing, light industrial uses could be allowed, as well as institutional uses like hospitals, but those would be by a special permit. This sub-district similarly has fairly large lot area of requirements, kind of moderate open space requirements, trying to keep the height not quite as high as that Village Center, but still trying to create a gateway on the eastern end of the corridor and trying to have a little bit more setbacks here in order to make sure that there's that buffer that folks were looking for between the commercial uses and the residential uses. In terms of some of the additional recommendations, we are prioritizing ways to ensure housing affordability through this zoning. One of the ways is by having naturally occurring affordable housing, which we're doing by legalizing the existing non-conforming lots. Inclusionary zoning will also be required in the multifamily housing sub-districts, so a certain percentage of units will be set aside for moderate and lower-income households. And accessory apartments will be allowed by right in all the sub-districts. For design guidelines, we're looking at both building and site standards. In terms of building standards, trying to make sure that buildings aren't overwhelming the street or overwhelming the sidewalk by having setbacks for taller buildings, articulation standards, so that you don't just have one long monolith of a building along the street, and then also requiring windows on the ground story for those, that kind of active feel. For the site, we want to encourage integrated and adjacent public and private spaces, whether that's landscape areas or seating areas, as well as incorporate some of these complete street standards for sidewalks and bicycle facilities. Parking is another key aspect of the Powder Mill Road corridor because currently it's a very vehicle-focused area. And we understand that it's important for folks to be able to get around with a car, but we also want to make it safe and and possible for folks to get around by other means of transportation. So one thing that we are floating is this idea of not having parking minimums, but instead having parking maximums. So the amount of off-street parking that's allowed would actually be capped at a certain number. And this is based on work that we've seen other communities doing. And MAPC has also done some research in the region that shows that parking is generally overbuilt, even in kind of more suburban rural communities. We also would like to require infrastructure for electric vehicle charging, as well as bike parking and parking and landscaping requirements. And we also are trying to incentivize shared parking. And hopefully, that will help to not only reduce the amount of parking that is provided, but also limit the number of curb cuts, which will help limit some of those pedestrian vehicle interactions. Lastly, we are baking environmental standards into all aspects of this project. And there are some components that you see throughout the zoning ordinance, like signage or lighting. But we really want to prioritize things like rainstorm water infrastructure and tree protection, as well as thinking about river access from a number of different perspectives. I've been looking at it from the visual, physical, and environmental access standpoints. So thinking about visual access, meaning can you see the river? Physical access, meaning can you walk up to or kayak up to the river? And environmental access, meaning is the river safe? Does it have a good water quality? So those are the standards as we've developed them so far. And before we go to getting your feedback, I just wanted to share a little bit about next steps. The rest of the fall, we're gonna spend refining these zoning standards. So we're gonna take all the input that you share with us today and really talk about that amongst the project team and then work individually with the town planning staff to come up with standards that make the most sense for both Acton and Maynard. And then we're gonna take all of that back to the public by having a public open house. We are targeting November fifteenth for that date. You're the first ones to know, so you can start spreading the word. We'll be publicizing it on our project webpage as well to really try and understand from folks, the same thing that we're asking you, are these zoning standards meeting the goal of this project? And then based on the public response that we get, we'll finalize those zoning standards so that in the winter, the towns can turn those standards into draft zoning bylaw language and hopefully submit those before an article is proposed so that they can be up for a town meeting adoption in the spring. So in terms of feedback, I put the goal statement back up on this slide because my main question for you is how can the proposed zoning best to meet the project's goal? Do you think that we are on our way to meeting the goal? Are we meeting the goal? Do you have suggested improvements to some of the proposals that we've shared, whether that's around uses, dimensional standards, sub-district boundaries? Or are there things that we missed? Are there aspects of the zoning that you think are really important that we cover through this project? And I think that that is it for me. This is just information about the project contacts and the project webpage. But I can leave it up on the feedback slide for now. And like I said, happy to go back and pull up any slides if folks have questions or want to talk through something. But thank you for your time. I know that was a lot of information, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Wow, Sarah, thank you. That was yes, it was, but that was very well presented, in my opinion. Thank you for walking us through that. And obviously, I think the feedback that we can give is important, and now's the time to do it. So I'm gonna open it up for the Acton folks here.
Hi, Sarah, could you tell us on these these sub-districts kind of what the geographic borderlines are that we know now? In other words, we know where downtown Maynard is. We all have that in our heads, but I'm not sure where the other ones begin and end.
Oh, sure. Yeah, let me see. So is this the map that you were referring to? Okay, so we've got the river.
Stop and shop is right here, am I right?
Yep. Yep, so this is a stop and shop up here. We've got, let's see, this is the Stratus Development down here, and this is the Prime Warehouse Development right here. This is Victory Plaza right here, the Elks Lodge down this way. Does that help orient you a little bit? The dam is right over here.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yes. So, Sarah, thanks very much. This is James Fuchiyi. I just wanted to ask about the proposed uses and senior housing seemed to be a special permit. Why isn't that by right in some of the zones? Is that just based off public feedback?
That's a great question. I think that, yeah, I think you saw that maybe here, Subdistrict Two.
Also, the other, and the other, I'm sorry to interrupt, but also the other there's where there's mixed use or multifamily.
Right here, Subdistrict Four.
Well, yeah, both of them now, so.
Yeah.
Sarah, if you want, because it's basically based off of Acton's
Yeah, sure.
existing bylaw. So James, that's a great question. You know, it's something we can definitely look into. I think now nursing homes, retirement communities, assisted living facilities, they all are required by special permit in the town of Acton, no matter the zoning district. Because typically, when, you know, you're thinking of what requires a special use, it's something that requires a little bit more discretion for it. So typically, when we see like the theory is like higher-density assisted living communities, you'd want it to go theoretically through a more rigorous process to make sure it fits with the site. But that's something if, you know, you feel strongly that it shouldn't be required by special permit, that's something, you know, we could look into for this.
Yeah, I think the slide that Sarah has up now just not the assisted living part, but just the elderly housing.
Yeah, I think along the lines of what Kayla said, that it was, it's less about the use and it's more about how the use tends to look in terms of the types of buildings that you get and how the site is laid out. And especially in Subdistrict Two, it's really categorized for the most part by these kind of small, single-family houses that are on small lots. There are some areas which you can see in in the map where there are these kind of like multifamily housing garden apartment developments that are tucked away a little bit more. And so, so it's a good point. Like, those are definitely areas where I think a senior housing facility or a retirement home might be a better fit. But like Kayla was also saying, one of the things that I was trying to do, that we were trying to do, was really elevate uses that were a special permit right now to being allowed by right, if it made sense for the project. But keeping other uses at special permit if the considerations that led them to being a special permit in the first place were still in effect in this area, if that makes sense.
And Sarah, just to, I'm sorry to interrupt, James, just one other thing too, is what we've found in this process is Acton and Maynard have very different ways of classifying uses. You know, it's a shortlist and Maynard is incredibly long and they kind of really dictate everything out. So elderly
Working on that.
Elderly housing, that was specific to Maynard's. That's where it's gonna get a little tricky in, you know, knowing the towns, is this sub-district where it says elderly housing, that's specific to Maynard and their bylaw. We don't have a use called elderly housing would fall into something else under Acton.
Got it. All right, I mean, through a Maynard. Got it. All right. They mean the through a manner, a manner of the person.
I would suspect as the as the uh. The process goes along and the and the districts and the uses are refined a little bit, there'd be an adjustment there. Our elderly housing uh is currently is is basically owned by the Housing Authority. But uh we'll we'll, when I talk with the planning board about this, I suspect that may change a little bit to address some of these concerns.
And while we're looking at uh Sub District Two, that was one of the ones that I think Bill and I discussed the most. And had the most like interesting discussion. It's a very interesting sub district. We have a lot going on. We have a lot of different size lots. Um and a lot of different multifamily all the way up to elderly housing, um public housing. So it was really difficult to try to figure out where exactly those lines would go. Um but this is, yeah, that's that's why we need we need some input and um some feedback to try to figure out. You know, is is this the direction that we should be going in or should we start to, you know, move those lines?
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure. I know that Michaela's been waiting.
Oh, yeah, Michaela.
Hi, um I just noticed that in uh the. Multifamily housing, you are suggesting a height restriction of fifty-six to sixty-two feet. But in the commercial center, you've reduced that height to like forty-five feet. Why not have it as high as the as the uh the residential? Because if you're if you're asking hospitals or whatever to bring in their. Their uses, why not allow them to be that high?
That's a good question. Yeah, I think that we got the sense that forty-five feet was a height that. Was kind of the limit of what most folks were comfortable with, especially for commercial uses. Um oftentimes in feedback, we'd hear that uh folks are a little bit more supportive of higher heights if it was for. Residential development. Um but I think some of it too is that just the types of buildings that would most likely be built in this area. Probably wouldn't be much taller than that. Um but certainly something that we can talk about more and. Acton Maynard folks, feel free to to jump in here if you had any additional thoughts on that.
Well, I think I think the 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 first thing is based on a lot of the initial feedback and the designs that. Uh got higher approval from the public. Were, I would say probably, you know, forty-five feet or under, but they were the the multifamily, higher density looks. Were more of a um. They they were configured differently. If you look at some of the um the photos that are on um Sarah's. Uh PowerPoint, you can see there's a difference there. Um but again, that's something we, you know, certainly willing to talk about it and all, but I think that's where that originated. In Maynard, uh we only have um in our downtown, we have a. For our mill, there is a uh seventy-foot height limit, but other than that, uh we go our current um zoning allows for forty-five. But that's something we haven't really uh discussed yet. It would be something that I'd be interested to hear what the rest of the board thinks. There's the um, do you have the, Sarah, do you have the one? Um the one slide that has the standards of it, the multifamilies, um the preferred standards that the public weighed in on. That has the sort of designs, I think that was.
Oh, yes.
It was, I saw it somewhere. Yeah, yeah. Um so if you look at like this type of higher density. Um multifamily, it tends to be uh slightly lower, and that was the initial thought that we had anyway. Was that uh this was what the the preference was, we could still achieve the density. But it didn't uh go to this, um it it didn't go to the heights above forty-five feet in general. But I don't know if anybody else has anything to jump in on, but that was uh my two cents.
So I'm I'm a little confused because what we're seeing here is about thirty-five feet maybe at the top, but you.
That's right.
Sixty feet, so twice that high. So I'm I'm a little confused about what.
Yeah. Oh, well, we were talking about like forty-five feet, as I understood on it, but um that was our initial input with it. Uh the the um, I think that was. Uh but yeah, anyway, the answer is that that was our uh our thought was forty-five feet would be the height. Us being Maynard, um we're open to talk about it. That was why we thought it was. Um but um that's something that we'd want to, you know, go along and 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 explore.
Uh the the other thing too, Michaela, with um. The multifamily sub district is that. Um you know, we kind of combined almost two planning processes through that multifamily sub district. Because in Acton, I think two, hopefully for Maynard, but um we've already gone to the public with. Um our three A uh proposal is that sub district is going to be compliant with three A. So through that process, we've been hearing feedback on um. On what we like to do for that site, and so that's where that kind of changes a little bit with this process is because we're kind of. Weaving them in a little bit together, just specifically for those. That multifamily parcel, which is like where the Powder Mill Apartments, the approved forty B is going to go, and next door it's the um. The, what is it? The marijuana site.
Medical marijuana, yeah, medical.
Yeah.
And the last thing I'll say, I'm sorry.
So how many acres are you talking about for the three A and the and the um, I guess it's sub district, the four. Sub district four. How many acres is that that we're talking about here?
I actually don't know that number off the top of my head.
I'll tell you in a minute. So I have the G I S.
At least on the Acton side, we can.
Yeah, in we, in the town of Acton, I can tell you only because I don't have their G I S open. Um so we'd be looking at. One point two five, sorry, there we go. And then, so the site where Powder Mill Apartments was permitted for a forty B project. I'm just. Okay, sorry, trying to click on it. There we go. Um is ten point five acres and then so we're talking, the other small property next door. Is one point two five, so you know, around twelve.
Twelve, so twelve with fifty acres.
Yeah, we're, this ours is about, I think it's thirty-seven on um roughly.
Okay, thank you. Oh, um one other question. You said something about shared parking. Shared parking requirements are minimums. How were you envisioning that to work?
Well, it's at no minimums.
No minimums, but shared parking to encourage that there were no minimums.
Yeah, so the idea behind shared parking is that rather than each use or each building having to. Uh have a certain amount of parking just on their lot, that um you could have parking that would. Uh serve multiple buildings in one location, so. I think that it helps to not have parking minimums because part of shared parking is. Uh being able to have uses that perhaps have peak demand at different times that use the same parking area. Um but I think that the the kind of other idea behind shared parking. That we're focusing on is trying to have less curb cuts. And so um the idea is that we'd be trying to encourage property owners to essentially pool their parking together.
We have some of these tools in our existing zoning today in the village districts. We have shared parking. Um in different ways, so um we have some options where. Um you could prove through an agreement that you've shown, that's, you know, private agreement between.
Leaving it up to the private owners to come to an.
Exactly, yeah, and so that they don't have to provide it all on site. We have examples of that um in South Acton Village, across Acton Village that exists today.
Is there any possibility that you could do um parallel parking along sixty-two there? Or is that not allowed because it's a state road?
Well, I think. So we are also, I don't know how much you want to go into that part today. The the D P W director is working on a complete streets project in Acton. The town received a substantial amount of grant funding. Um through Mass Works, um and we're looking at a design for that section of Powder Mill Road. Um that hasn't come up yet as a discussion point that I'm aware of.
Yeah, it's kind of a lot to ask the business owners themselves to come up with a.
But at the same. Sorry. No, no, just at at the same time, there's plenty of parking in the area. I was in one of the discussion groups where they said. The stop and shop lot is is way more spots than people ever used to park in. So I mean, that could always be. An access point, people park there and walk to businesses close by or something like that. But I don't know if all of those retail spaces would agree to do that, but I don't know who's in charge of that part.
Yeah, exactly. So that's kind of sketchy. And then further down, we have the mixed use for resident, business and residential. What are your assumptions about the numbers of people who are going to live there? And actually leave during the day so that there would be a terrible space? What what assumptions do you use?
So that's, are you talking about in terms of uh like the parking management of how many spaces would be available?
Yeah, I guess I'm talking about math basically because, or arithmetic. Um. If nobody leave, if you have multifamily housing, how many people do you say think are cars per unit? What are your assumptions? How do you figure it out?
Oh, that is a whole other realm of planning and engineering that comes with lots of binders of standards. So I definitely cannot speak to uh to that in depth, but yeah, Kristen, do you want to?
So um there's a lot of theories and a lot of discussion about this lately. About what's needed for multifamily versus single family. Um and there's been a movement to have a reduction in the amount of parking spaces required for multifamily housing. Um currently, the town of Acton requires two spaces, two parking spaces per residential unit, and it doesn't differentiate between. Whether it's a single-family home or multifamily home or a duplex, triplex, or anything like that. Um but I think one of the things that could be explored is looking at reduction. You know, for multifamily, you know, doing one point five spaces rather than two. Um and a lot of the forty B developments that we're seeing. Um they ask for a waiver from the number of parking spaces. And keeping in mind, they're still, they have to market these units, so people are, they know what the market is and what the market requires. Um else they wouldn't be building it. So I think it's just, it's, you know, keeping all of that in context, so having um, you know. Um maximums rather than minimums is is a hot topic, but.
Yeah, and I would add to that too, that the sense I get is that parking is managed differently for the commercial uses and the residential uses. Because as you were alluding to, um the need for parking may occur at different times. And they also might be located at different areas of the lot, um and they also might be uh. Charged in different ways. Um all the parking could be free, but for example, you could have metered parking for commercial use and monthly pass for residential use, that sort of thing.
I wanted to re, I I appreciate bringing up the on-street parking because. I think it would make a world of difference along there if there is parallel parking on the street. It would be a buffer, so people are more comfortable on the sidewalks, and it would make people slow down. I mean, it just would be a completely different place than if it's zooming by and entering parking lots. Um where you don't, you're much more likely to park once and walk to many different businesses than when there's separate lots. I also think it's important to find places for transit stops because sometimes our. Um cat bus and or maybe the Maynard shuttle. Um if it goes to the area, would more likely go. The way it's set up into and it slows it down, you know, go into parking lots rather than having a place to just pull over. Um I also was noted that you said at one point you. Determined a sort of size based on what's there. Um and I sometimes think that we have to be careful, I mean, I'm sure you think about this all the time. Um but of not just as something happened to have been there that we don't base our present planning on that.
That's a good point, absolutely. I, and in terms of the parallel parking point, I will bring that up with my colleague, Adi Notcher. Who is in the Transportation Division here at M A P C and has been consulting on the complete streets aspect. My guess, my very uneducated guess is that uh as someone had mentioned, because it's a state road and. Probably because of the speeds that are allowed on the road, um parallel parking might not be recommended. And I think that there is also a focus on using some of that right of way to have safe travel for pedestrians and bicyclists. And I think that there's probably just not enough right of way to then also have parallel parking. But the point about looking for a traffic calming measure is and ways to have folks slow down is certainly something that. Um that we can keep recommending. I know it was something that was talked about in phase one and is certainly an aspect of the Complete Streets work. Acton, for example, uh some of the design work that they've been doing. Is looking at opportunities for adding more crosswalks and signalized intersections. Um you can also look at opportunities to have some bump outs of the sidewalk to make the roadway feel more narrow. Even having trees, like street trees along the sidewalk, or having buildings that are closer to the sidewalk, those kind of. Visual constraints almost uh have been shown to help reduce speeds as well. So so all those points are taken and and I'll definitely look into them a little bit more.
I think.
Sarah, can I add one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Um, one of the things that that we thought was um important for this initiative. Was to um provide a general guidance for new development. Of uh what would happen to on the right of way or the adjacent to the right of way. So that there was a level of consistency in pedestrian um and and psych, bicycle safety. And and the the hope is that eventually uh with the. Um resulting bylaws that there will be a a a type of almost templates created. That um ensure that there's a consistency, you know, throughout the corridor for uh. Non-motorized vehicular traffic in particular. And that was important, and so we're hoping that will be uh a result of part of this.
She's saying, and then James.
Sure.
So then I want to say that the 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 study was impressive. You guys have done a lot of good background research to come up with the plans. The only thing I could think of asking was more of an outside question. Have you considered a a walkover bridge over the river and try and do something on the other side as well?
That's a great question, and I.
Take that one?
Yeah, sure, go for it.
Okay, so and yeah, so the town of Maynard does own uh the significant portion of the uh of the land on the other side of the river. Um we do have the green uh green blue trail that then connects uh into your green boot trail over on the other side of Acton. Um and we're really trying to see these opportunities uh that are coming about with. The work on the corridor and trying to get that to also work within what we're trying to do with our conservation land and expanding access. Um one thing that comes with, you know, when we're talking about riverfront access. Riverfront walks or some sort of bridge. So I'm also the conservation agent in the town of Maynard, I should also say that. Uh is it gets really complicated when you start talking about permitting uh along the river. Um and it really, you know, I think there are, there are a few places where that could be an opportunity. But on the Powder Mill side, we don't have as many publicly owned spaces. Um where we would, we would have that access. So it's really going to come down to seeing that redevelopment and then working with, you know, that developer. Uh whoever ends up getting a parcel on that side, um you know, and what they're. How much access they would like. So we're in trying to incentivize, you know, giving more public access to the river, but then trying to expand that to the other side. It's going to take a lot of land, um you know, and and a lot of work. And so, yeah, it's a goal, definitely. It's gonna take a lot of land, um, you know, and, and a lot of work. And so, yeah, it's a goal, definitely, but it's gonna take us a long time to get there.
And it is something, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, I think, I understand it's not easy and probably fairly expensive, but I think the R O I is pretty good. Even if all it does is provide an access to some trail, uh, and some area on the other side.
Yeah, absolutely. And it, it is something that's come up actually in some of the community engagement that we've done because, uh, I don't know, can you see my cursor? Does that show up? Yeah, so, so that green blue trail that Julia mentioned essentially runs along here. And so a lot of folks said, well, wouldn't it be great if we had connections on this side and on this side so that you could have a loop trail and create, um, a new trail kind of behind these lots here on the south side of the Asabet River? And, uh, I think kind of contrary to, uh, to my planning training, my first thought was, no, that's not possible. That's gonna be too hard. Um, but in conversations with folks, you know, I came to appreciate the kind of visionary nature of it. And while a, a, a walkover bridge or a, um, a trail that really runs the length of the river isn't something that we are, um, kind of press, putting forward as a priority for this plan. Um, we do want to encourage those types of ideas to happen in the future. So even if, for example, you get some incremental development of trails along the river, uh, we would love for you to then be able to walk up to a sidewalk and then finish your route on a sidewalk and then maybe go back in along the river and pick up the trail. Um, and you know, whether that means being able to cross up here and come around this way or come down to the downtown and then reach the trail. Right? It, it takes a little bit of creativity, but I think, um, to me at least, part of the value of having a plan is putting the idea out there, just like you've done. And, um, as Julia said, if opportunities come up, being able to point you back and say, hey, here's this great idea. Here's an opportunity for us to move that forward.
That was great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jane, also, other folks, other ideas to share?
Sarah, can you clarify? Earlier in the presentation, you talked about a river walk. Is that what you're talking about or are you talking about San Antonio?
Um, I, I am a big fan of San Antonio River Walk and I love a good boardwalk. I think as Julia mentioned, the permitting for those types of projects could be challenging. And one of the things that we identified along Powder Mill is that you can maybe barely see it, but there are these really long skinny lots here. And based on the conservation commission standards, there's kind of some amount of disturbance that you're generally not allowed to have towards the back anyway. Um, so folks that we talked to in the public engagement that we did seemed open to the idea of perhaps letting the development of a trail happen on these private properties here, so interior of the water line, um, in exchange for the property easements. So that's, that's more of what we were talking about. But there are also spots, like if you look down here, again, I know it's a little bit harder to see, but, um, yeah, like down here in Maynard where you can see that the parcels actually extend quite a bit into the river. So you, uh, I'll leave it up to Julia to decide if she would permit some boardwalks down there.
One of the good, one of the great, um, initial reclamation of, uh, river access, I think, is, uh, I hope you've all had a chance to go behind the Asabet, uh, co-op and see the deck that was built out there. Julia worked very hard on that with the developer. And it's, it, it's just, it's a game changer. And it's, it's, it provides a, a great example of what can be done with a little creativity and working within the constraints sort of there.
I think on your point, Sarah, with, um, talking about the, those property, uh, boundaries, uh, thank you, Bill, for the shout out. Uh, but, uh, when we look at those properties, you know, something that we have to keep in mind is, you know, is the, is the dam, um, in Acton. Um, you know, it's privately owned and, uh, that's what's really shaping a lot of these properties and it's where we're planning towards unknowns of climate change of, you know, we're, I've never seen the river this high in the summer. Like, I was planning on having a drought this summer. We didn't, um, we didn't really see that on the riverside. We saw way more flash flooding. So all of these things are kind of culminating into how are we preparing this area for climate change for, you know, being flood resilient, um, while also being able to enhance and, and improve riverfront access. So these, they're, they're very contradictory, uh, contradictory. And that's where, you know, conservation and planning is trying to work together. Uh, and I'm contradicting myself all the time with depending on what hat I'm wearing. Of how do we get people, you know, to the riverfront to appreciate it, but also, you know, we're changing with, with a lot going on, so.
And we're trying to have less contradictions in the overlay zoning that we're developing, which is why we've been talking to Julia as well as the conservation agents in Acton. And I did just want to pull up to illustrate this in case folks haven't been following. This is the Asabet co-op market rendering that they had of the deck. And then, um, this is a view of what it looks like now. So they were able to build a deck with some great seating, have some views of the river, makes it feel like it's a little bit more accessible. Um, no one currently kayaking out there, but it's possible.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend it right now. It's very shallow. You will, you will get stuck. Um, but yeah, that's where, you know, with the dam opens, there's a lot, there's a lot more opportunities there. So we're, we'll see what ends up happening.
Other comments?
Well, just one of the comments that stuck out was a business owner says, the only time I get to look at the rivers when I take out my trash and throw it out back. And he said it'd be nice for people to actually see this, like, and have access to it. So it'd be a cool thing to have.
And have another place with the trash.
And have another place with it. But thank you very much for all of this.
Yes, thank you so much. At this point, at this point, are we ready to move on? Thanks.
Well, Maynard, Maynard planning board might have some comments.
Maynard comments.
Yeah, I want to give them an opportunity too.
Yeah, understanding, I, we understand that you, this is our off week and, and, and we understand this is a very busy week for you.
Oh, right ahead. No worries about that.
Well, I, I, Natalie is, uh, our vice chair will be filling in, but, um, I think that, uh, I would, uh, propose to our board also that we have a, a meeting that, um, on the October seventeenth, that would be great to digest all this as well. It just became open, so. But Natalie, I'll turn it over to you to, uh, run the rest of the meeting here how you'd like and adjourn and we can let these, um, folks, uh, uh, get onto their business that they have or whatever's the timeframe.
Yeah. The only thing I was gonna say, I didn't know if anyone on Maynard's board had any like big picture, you know, bullet put point items that they could bring up now, but otherwise I think saving our discussion and our feedback to compile for a later date is a good idea. Sure, I would just say that, um, you know, even if folks want to take some time to digest this, it would be great if you could send feedback, um, either through your town planning staff or you're welcome to send it to me and copy them as well. Um, probably in the next few weeks or so because we are trying to aim for this November fifteenth public forum. And I want to make sure that we've been able to incorporate all the feedback from these two planning boards, um, before we, we bring the information to the public. I know that, uh, Acton planning board has a busy night tonight, but maybe I'll just see Bill and Ed, Jeff, do any of you have any comments, you know, that would be a useful, big picture comment?
Yeah, I, I just have a few, I guess, thoughts maybe. Um, I, I guess it would be helpful for me to digest like the difference between the underlying zoning and the sub-district to sort of compare the dimensional standards that you get on the underlying versus what's, and maybe just because it's, it's not like right next to each other. I'm having a hard time correlating it, but it sounded like you said you could, you don't ha- have to use the overlay zoning. You could just, so I guess if, if, like, is there a, a density bonus or something that they're, that someone's getting that's gonna incentivize them to, to use that? And then if they then are then held to like the, the dimensional standards of the proposed overlay district, you know, I'm looking at, at like minimum open space, right? Uh, like, I know some cities or towns, you know, could make a distinction between, especially, uh, when these aren't big lots to begin with. You know, uh, adding like a public, like a percentage that has to be publicly accessible open space, if that's part of what some of the goal is, you know, and, and being meaningful about what the, even the definition of open space is. You know, that doesn't necessarily have to be pervious area, right? Like you, someone has a parking lot and, you know, can, should we really be counting landscape islands as part of, you know, usable open space? So I, I guess that, that's sort of where I'm headed in terms of like, you know, how, what's incentivizing them to use that? And maybe if I saw, you know, the standards next to each other, it would become more obvious. And then, you know, once they do opt into the overlay district, sort of what, you know, wh- what's the public benefit from, from that point of view?
Yeah, that's, those are all good questions, Jeff, and, and, and yes to everything you asked. Uh, uh, density bonuses are, are, uh, we're considering those as the tool and the incentive to get, um, the type of development that we'd like to see there. And there, um, and I don't, I won't take up a lot of time now, but, but the, um, the current zoning is, uh, uh, one of the things that triggered this originally was that there was such a, a wide assortment of incompatible zoning existing on the underlying districts that we know something is gonna happen on the district. The question is, you know, what is it going to be? And if it all happened like the existing zoning allowed, it, it would be, there'd be a little rhyme or reason of anything and certainly no, um, uh, mandated public benefit or, you know, improvements that would, um, sort of forward the goals that we're trying to, but that's something we'll touch on later, but you, you're right on, you're right on.
I've got two bigger picture comments, if I may. Um, one is, we recently got a home-based business zoning townwide. So are we advocating for adjusting that specific to, um, uh, I forget what zone it was, three or whatever? Or is that just something that hasn't been caught up in the planning?
No, that, that's something that Bill and I have been talking about a lot lately and, um, what, uh, I think kind of the next step of this is going to be, is to make sure that we are not adding additional layers of complication to the overlay district if something is already addressed in the base zoning. And so that's also where, uh, you know, this presentation is trying to speak to both Acton and Maynard. And some of those base zoning rules are a little bit different. Uh, but I know that Maynard has recently passed that home, I think it was called the home occupations section of your zoning by law. Home-based business. Um, yeah, so, uh, yeah, we, we don't necessarily want to change that.
Okay, and the other question about complexities is, um, I guess it's sub-district one. That overlay district would overlap with some of our downtown overlay district.
Right.
And I'm trying to figure out what sub-district one changes get us that we can't accomplish with a D O D. Why don't we just extend the D O D to cover that footprint of district one?
Yeah, I think again, that will be something that we talk about a little bit more as we're working on the specifics because we, we're kind of developing these concepts more broadly to see if and how and where they would apply to both towns. And, um, Bill and Julia and I have been talking a little bit about the downtown overlay district and how that does or doesn't make sense along Powder Mill. And, um, I don't remember the details off the top of my head, but I believe that there were some key differences that made us want to pursue a separate overlay in this area. But I think that, like you said, taking a closer look at how they interact, um, and if that means redrawing the boundaries or tweaking some of the standards, I think that's an important thing to do. All right. I think if that's all we've got from our board right now, we can, uh, take a step back and let you guys. Should we close our meeting? Should we, is that the next?
Yeah, we just get a motion, uh, to close a second and we'll close. And thank you again to our, our neighbors in Acton for hosting this and putting it together. Thank you.
All right.
I'll do a motion to close.
I'll second that. Um, uh, I'll vote for closing the meeting. Uh, Annette?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So thank you guys so much for having us to your presentation.
Well, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Taylor, if you, thanks. If you get us that tape, that'd be great because we had a select board meeting that, it, it started with executive session early tonight, and so it loused up, a lot of people wanted to see it. So we'll, this will be on our, our greatest hits rotation.
Yeah, I'll send it over.
All right. Thank you, Sarah.
I'm gonna jump off as well. Thanks, everyone. Hope you're not on your back, so. Good night.
Good night.